Let me check in with the key. Got it, it's it's good. We can start.
Okay, so let's um if we go unmute our s- un- unmute ourselves and do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is then one nation under God. Visible with liberty and justice for all. Moving right along, do we have a motion to accept the school committee minutes from our last meeting on January thirteen twenty twenty two?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting?
Do we have a second?
Second.
No objections, motion passes. Um next, we're gonna move on to our public comment section. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have a Chelsea High School teacher, Julia Bastille.
Welcome. If you could state your full name and address and you, I believe, what is it? Is this four minutes? Veronica, yeah, four minutes to speak.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Julia Basilei. Uh, I'm in my fourth year as an educator at Chelsea High School. I teach Shelter D L A. I live at twenty-nine Hammond Street in Cambridge. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the E policy as it is reinstated for our third quarter. I wanted to share just a fraction of the real-life stories of our students who would have been penalized by this policy this fall if it had not been exempt in quarter one and quarter two. I feel strongly that a commitment to equity means challenging this policy in whatever way and to whatever degree you are able. In one educator's three sections of eleventh and twelfth grade multilingual learners, twenty-four out of forty-six students, more than fifty percent, would have received Es. Sixteen of those students had As or Bs. The teacher explained, these are all students who have to provide for their families and work full-time jobs outside of school. They usually work until one in the morning and some days they come in late. They used weekends to make up for work that they had missed. One student sprained his ankle and he lives a mile from school. He asked repeatedly for a bus card from the school, but we didn't have any left. He still limped to school each day, but he missed the first period of few days in a row. One student had to help her family move on a moment's notice when their household situation became dangerous. Many students without proper jackets or a ride haven't come to school on ten-degree days. One student left for winter vacation a few days early to see her sick grandmother in El Salvador for the first time in three years. Another student came back four days after break after being reunited with his mother in Guatemala for the first time in three years. I understand that the members of this committee have heard from some students who did not express great concern over the E policy. I'd be curious to know if those young people are a complete representation of our school's entire student body. Did students and families who have been personally affected by the policy have a voice? What about our newly arrived students, our students without documents, or students whose families may be struggling most financially? It is worth sharing that one National Honor Society student felt like she wasn't ready to speak up against the E policy when asked by our admin team last week because she felt like it wasn't polite to challenge an authority figure. This morning, she explained that sometimes students stay home when they're experiencing severe depression. They do not talk with our intendant's officer about getting an exemption for this absence out of fear that their lived experience will be debated or denied as an invalid excuse to miss school. I understand that the E policy is designed with some loopholes to ensure that certain cases like the ones I've mentioned are exempt. People most positioned to take advantage of loopholes are those with more relative privilege. English-speaking families, families who understand the U.S. education system better. Students and parents who are not working two jobs and perhaps have the time to come in and talk with someone in person. It's incorrect to assume that loopholes are equally accessible to all. The outcome, then, is an inequitable one. I also understand that other districts have similar policies. That doesn't make it that the policies are sound. We can push for something more equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica, do we have any more public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move along to our presentations. Dr. Beta?
Hey. Thank you. Can you uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So tonight, I am, I am excited about our next presentation. It is, we really wanted to um talk about mental, student mental health and specifically. And so I have invited Dr. Erin Jennings and Ellen Cocanitas and Kim Huffer to speak to uh, to speak and present on student mental health and Chelsea Public Schools. So I'm gonna s- I'm gonna stop my share and share it with Dr. Jennings and um, we'll take it from there. So Dr. Jennings, do you, did you have co-hosts?
Yes, ma'am. Um, um, I believe I do. I do, great.
Great. Great, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, again, I I'm pleased to have Dr. Jennings with us and his amazing team. Our lead social worker, Kim, our administrator of social work and S C L, Kim Huffer and Ellen Cocanitas are coordinator of school counseling. So the the purpose of this presentation is really just to share, share a status of where we are in Chelsea Public Schools. I always get asked the question, how has, how has this pandemic impacted our students? And how has um, the isolation and remote learning impacted our students? And you will definitely see, see some of that in the data that we share. And so right now, we are putting our resources together, our resources together within the district and throughout the district and externally to um, meet the needs of our students. But there, the needs are definitely um, have increased as a result of the isolation and and remote learning. And so there's a lot more um, issues that we are dealing with. And we do believe that you have to, we have to regulate our students first so that way they can, they can learn. And so this is an important piece of improving student achievement because we have to start with, with student mental health, regulating students, and then, and then we can learn. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Jennings.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Truly appreciate this opportunity um, to present to the school committee once again. Um, such a delight. Um, I am so excited to um, 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 share with you all the full Equity and Wellness Department. Um, how my colleague Kim Huffer, who is the administrator of schools of social work in S C L, and Ellen Cocanitas, who's the coordinator of school counseling. I'm gonna now pass it to my colleague, Ellen.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we were, we're just gonna start off with um, a little information about our teams. So my team, the school counseling team, consists of fifteen members, uh, four are which are Latino or Latina. Five of them are Spanish-speaking and fifteen of them have um, a DESI license. And as you'll see, uh, when Kim also presents her team members, um, one of our priorities has been to diversify our teams in order to better serve our students and our families. Kim?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Um, I am privileged enough to lead the school social work department, which uh, consists of eighteen social workers across our now eleven schools. Um, nine of which are Latino, Latina, um, eleven Spanish-speaking clinicians, which is more than we've ever had in the past, which is just really supported our, our students and families. Um, fifteen of our eighteen are licensed um, social workers within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so they have an independent uh, license. And I will say a fun fact is two of the members of my department are former Chelsea Public School students. Um, so it's great to have them come back and um, support students the way they were supported.
Um, Ms. Huffer, I'm going to further that fun fact. Are you going to acknowledge that one of them is one of your former students? That, that, you know, shows how long you've been in the district?
Ooh, well, that one, Erin just called me out. Uh, yes. Um, one of our middle school social workers is actually a student of mine uh, when I was the middle school social worker um, at the Clark Avenue Middle School. So thank you for calling out my age.
I can join in that and say, I think you're, I'm thinking of the same one, but um, she was my student at the Kelly Elementary School.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Um, let me first um, say that I wanna quote this, um, share this quote from Dr. Howard, who um, we were, had the privilege to attend a five-D P session in the fall. And he said, "I cannot focus on learning when I'm depressed, anxious, worried about where I will sleep at night or need medication." Let me say that we are a learning institution, institution of learning. And because of um, social constraints and social di- conditions, we have to address, we have to address um, our students' mental health. We have to do such a thing. That being said, let me give us all a little, a little level set. And um, I sometime we talk about mental health, everyone has a, a, a different definition of that. So I wanted to offer um, the CDC's definition of mental health. It includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also helps determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make healthy choices. Our mental health affects us all in every dimension of our life. So let me also say that I wanna share with you factors that um, in our, that impede academic and academic progress and success. And here in CPS, they show up in three domains. One, emotional, two, behavioral, and three, social. As it relates to emotional, it manifests in sadness, worry, anxiety, um, even loss of interest or motivation. Behavioral, it's inconsistent attendance, um, low energy fatigue, and sometimes difficult with emotion, with emotional regulation, shutting down on verbal outbursts. Socially, uh, there is peer conflict, social isolation, as well as sometimes verbal and physical aggression. These are the three domains that we see how mental health presents or manifests itself within CPS.
So I wanna talk a little bit about what we did um, to really identify the needs of our students. Um, when students came back this fall, we really wanted to know how they were doing emotionally. Uh, we were seeing some of the behaviors, we were seeing some of the impact, but how are they really feeling? Um, we wanted to look at kind of the mood, maybe levels of anxiety. And so one of our approaches was to um, offer a universal mental health screening. And we use the ARCAD's twenty-five, which is a twenty-five-question um, self-report measure um, looking at depression, mood, um, and levels of anxiety. It's a voluntary measure. Uh, we offered it to students digitally. Um, it was provided in multiple languages, in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. And we informed families that we were doing this and giving them an option to opt out. So if they did not want their student to participate, that was also an o- option. And while we administered this in grades three to twelve, um, because that is where the research is and, and where it's evidence-based, we also did identify um, an emotional wellness screener for our students in K through two as well. Uh, we used a digital platform uh, named uh, Close Gap that also allowed us to check in on them, how they were feeling, kind of their needs and wants as well. And so this was the data that um, we got from the screener. And I will say, it wasn't that surprising is that it really aligns with what the American Academy of Pediatrics was saying around a mental health crisis about uh, what the U.S. Surgeon General had come out with about mental health really being a public health issue. And so I know there's a lot of numbers on this slide. And so one of the things is, when we look at the, when we look at the data, pre-pandemic, a normed rate for students that would score in this clinically significant range is usually about two percent of students um, that had taken the screener. And clinically significant, it means that there are some signs, there are some symptoms around either depression and/or anxiety. So it could be around sadness, it could be around eating, sleep, um, just excessive worry. And then there are students kind of within that borderline at risk that are having some symptoms, they're like students that we should start to worry about, maybe do some early intervention with. And usually, that's about a six percent of the population shows up in that. So if you add that two in six, you think about eight percent of our students that typically, pre, pre-pandemic may have shown up in the screener. And so our numbers around Chelsea are a little bit higher. Um, and again, that goes with kind of the, the national norm that we're seeing. What we are seeing in our district is a higher level for our middle school. And so we've kind of really tried to wrap around that and really thinking about the developmental stage that middle school students are in, uh, where the peer group becomes super important to them. So they're in this middle of like, being dependent on families, but being independent, really trying to um, achieve their identity. And so we're seeing the biggest impact on them mostly because of the social isolation, as well as just the unpredictability of the world. So when I looked at that data, like what, what were, what did we learn and, and what can we use these results for? And so we realized there were some strengths with this data. And one is that it really de-stigmatized mental health. It allowed us opportunities to talk about mental health, to talk about the importance, the impact on academics, um, on our social situations and everything. It also allowed us to identify students that we may not have known about. So about fifty percent of the students that were identified in that clinically significant or borderline significant range were not known to social work or known to school counselors. They had never had a referral. So they were the kind of those quiet students that maybe had a lot going on that we hadn't um, really recognized yet. And by doing that, we were allowed to kind of have early intervention. And it's hard to have those conversations with them and connect families to resources ahead of time before it gets to that crisis level. We also recognize that some challenges is that not all students opted to participate. Uh, we had a, our lowest percentage rate um, was at the high school. We still had about a sixty-seven percent response rate, which is great. Um, but we've still, there's some wor- some worries about students that maybe weren't identified. And so some students that we still want to pay attention to. And the other big challenge is just that because of this large percentage, it is really kind of taxed some of the capacity of being able to kind of connect families to resources in the community. Our mental health providers uh, have some long wait lists. Um, so really kind of getting that connection um, for families has been um, a little bit slower than we would like.
So given the information that you um, heard from Dr. Jennings and uh, Kim Huffer, um, our district is working to meet the needs, the mental health needs of our students um, through a tiered um, approach intervention. Um, so our goal is for all of our students to improve their learning, to improve our graduation rates. Um, but overall, to promote success and well-being for all of our students. So if we're looking at this, tier one is more about universal supports and promotion of resources and skill building. That looks like building positive relationships with our students, having a safe school environment, this universal screener, um, that Kim just talked about, social-emotional learning and so forth. Um, tier two uh, is more about early intervention. So um, it's group and individual supports. This is where we have early identification of student needs, um, thinking about how to support, how to monitor their progress. Um, this is where we provide individual and group intervention, referral and case management, and overall family wraparound supports. Tier three is more about the treatment of mental health needs. So it's more individualized planning and intervention with our students um, and families, such as crisis intervention, you know, specific counseling, referrals, and collaboration with outside agencies. Now, how do we actually meet the needs of our students? Um, we, as district um, school counseling teams and social work teams are working together um, to meet the needs, the mental health needs of our students um, and our families. And we've categorized it sort of in three different buckets. Um, in addition to us, there are also educators that are supporting with this. And so if we look at the first bucket, we have intervention and assessment, where we have our individual meetings, our different assessment meth- methods. We provide psychoeducation to our students, coping skills, uh, group interventions, those are some examples. Um, family and community involvement, it's really important for us. And it is a priority to be in communication with the families um, of the students we're serving um, and being able to connect them with services within the community. And then social-emotional learning overall is the integration of mental health into S C L curriculum. Um, and it looks maybe a little different at, at the different schools. Um, there's advisory, there are wind blocks, um, there are different structures um, in each of the schools where there is an integration of these skills um, happening. Another system of support that we have um, is um, a comprehensive school mental health team um, that is looking at providing an array of supports district-wide. Um, they were looking to promote positive school climate, social and emotional learning, mental health and well-being um, in order to reduce the prevalence and the severity of mental health illness. And there are multidisciplinary members um, and educators on this team. We have S C L leads, school counselors, school social workers, special education staff, administrators, and working together um, to align sort of a district-wide system of support for, for all of our, our students at all levels.
So I wanna also um, introduce another system-level approach that we are um, have um, employed to um, meet the needs of our students. This is through a model called Children's Cabinet. And Children's Cabinets are bodies typically composed of heads of government, business, nonprofit agencies, and organizations um, that have child and youth-serving um, programs leaning focus. Children's Cabinets meet regularly to coordinate services, develop a common set of outcomes, um, collaborat- um, collaboratively decide upon and implement um, plans, as well as um, to, we'll excuse them with the sole focus of fostering and positively impacting the well-being of young people. In Chelsea, um, we were so fortunate to organize um, our own Children's Cabinet. And our focus is to improve the child well-being in Chelsea by strategic collaboration and alignment across our school district, city government, and community-based organizations um, within the following three areas. And let me take back, um, take a step and say that these three areas were um, independently, we had um, Boston College professors from the School of Education to come in and um, meet with and survey our community partners who own the Children's Cabinet. And our community partners identified mental health, out-of-school time, and college and career readiness as three um, important levers that we need to impact, to um, impact, to drastically improve the life and well-being of children and families, of children and youth in the city of Chelsea. I'll say that our north star is to increase graduation rates. Um, two more things. Let me also say that um, the Children's Cabinet is a authentic and strategic alignment, um, strategic partnership with our school department and city government. It's both chaired by our superintendent as well as our city manager. And last, I wanna say that Children's Cabinet is a network across the continental, continental U.S. plus Canada. And we here in Chelsea are extremely fortunate to be a part of uh, the local Children's Cabinet network where we get technical assistance. Each um, subcommittee, um, each focus of mental health, out-of-school time and cognitive readiness has its own goals. Mental health, we seek to improve child well-being, out-of-school time, increase participation of um, children and youth as well activities, as well as increase and broaden post-secondary pathways with students. Let me say once again, this is a system-level approach for these three areas. And as a system-level approach to addressing um, mental health, uh, to, to the mental health needs of our children, particularly for the mental health committee. Let me highlight that the mental health subcommittee, um, we are authentic cross-sector collaborators. So the subcommittee has members from the school department, the city, community-based organizations such as um, North-South of Mental Health, Healthy Chelsea Coalition, um, and Chelsea Community Connects. Once again, we are a true cross-sector, system-level approach to really addressing and meeting the needs of our students. Um, we shared earlier how, what, what we're doing within our school district, at our particular schools. And this is the system-level approach that we're taking. Lastly, that we have, we're staffed with a Boston College professor who is um, offering technical assistance and helping us um, along the process. Lastly, that each subcommittee, particularly the mental health subcommittee, is tightly connected to our strategic plan. Let me end with, with this quote, "You cannot discipline trauma." Say it again, "You cannot discipline trauma." In so doing, this is when we offer the mental health support services to our students and that our students need. Thank you. Any questions? I'm gonna stop sharing right now.
All right, go ahead. Are there any questions from any of the other school committee members? Josenia, Ms. Alcaro, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for such a great presentation. Really amazing all the findings, and it looked like uh, uh, it was really overdue. As we've seen that, you know, um, it, it is not only with the COVID, but children that have been moving into Chelsea have come with trauma from other countries and, you know, like the social-economic impact that they also see in the community that we be, we leave. So this is such a great uh, presentation that you made. I would like to know, uh, since there is other collaborators, I would like to know like, what are like, uh, the pieces of uh, information or rather resources that we as a school will, will be in need of, like financially, so that we can start advocating for that? Because this is, this is amazing if we can get implement, implemented in our system with the collaborators that you put there and, and more to come. Because uh, there is like a, a really big complement that you're gonna, we're gonna need. Um, and with that said also, I would like to have a copy of that. It's, um, it's an incredible presentation. It was overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Alcaro. Uh, we have, we have sent the email to uh, the presentation to everyone, so everyone on school committee does have it. And then as far as resources, uh, we continue to, as we do our budget right now, we're continuing to look at this data and um, everything that we use, we align our data and our budget to um, our, our, what, what the needs are. So if the needs are showing us that we have a lot of mental health needs, then our budget will align to that. We're fortunate to have S R three funding and S O A funding. And so it, it looks like an area that we still need to continue to shore up. We're very fortunate, as you can see in the slideshow. Um, the many staff that we do have, we've, we added social workers this year, we added school counselors this year. And uh, we still are, are, there was so much, there's so much need as a result uh, already to begin with, as Ms. Alcaro said. And then put the pandemic on top of that. So we definitely are looking at that right now in terms of aligning our budget with our needs. And Dr. Jennings, did you wanna comment on that?
No, ma'am, you didn't. No, ma'am. No ma'am, you didn't. No ma'am.
So I just want to say, and like Dr. Jennings, I don't want to age Ms. Conkenitis or Ms. Hopper. But they both worked with my children and my baby just turned twenty-one on Monday. So. Um, yeah, but I'm always happy to see you guys and happy that you're still part of our district. And you have been here for so long and given so much to our students. I appreciate that. Um, also, I'm very happy to see that we have, uh, the multi-tier support system in place. As I'm currently working on one. But my biggest thing is, again, and I probably bring this up a lot is. Yes, we call our parents and we tell them, but I feel that we need to have a group for them culturally. We don't believe in depression. We don't want to hear it. You know, you just have to keep working and doing what you're doing. In the fall, I met a mom over senior there at Chelsea High. The senior does AP classes. She's been doing wonderful. She's on track to graduate. A lot of absences. Mom was saying, oh, she says she's depressed. I don't believe it because one day she's fine, the other day she's not. I said, that's how it works. You're not going to see her every day looking sad. I said, there's good and bad days. Um, and mom just didn't want to hear it. And I'm here just trying to tell her, you know, keep an open mind, talk to your daughter. I said, it's there. You have an AP student who's on track to graduate. And now you're seeing things that are not normal for her. I'm like, just talk to her. So I would love to see in this, uh, multi-tier system that maybe we're doing like a coffee hour with, with the parents. And really explaining to them, you know, about this mental health. Um, you know, a lot of them, the religion plays a role in it. You know, they believe faith will heal. Yes, that will work, but there's also other supports there, um, for the families. And most of the time I find that the parents are going through trauma themselves. They never dealt with it. So this is how they're just teaching their, um, students. But like, I'm happy to see what's in place and I would love to see more parent support groups, you know, every quarter or so. Just something to, to bring to them. I don't know before they used to do the second step parent. Um, I don't know if that's still happening in the district, um, but you know, I think that would be great to add on to this multi-tier support system.
Thank you. That's wonderful. I, I, I agree with you. That's needed.
Any other questions on this presentation? Anybody? As I scroll through my screen, make sure I'm not missing any raised hands. Okay, so, um, I'm safe to say, Dr. Abeta, we can move on to, um.
Okay.
The report for the superintendent.
Sure. So, um, I'm going to move on and our next report is the student achievement report, our indicators of success. And, uh, Mr. Lovato is out tonight. So, um, Mr. Delaney is going to fill in for him. So, Mr. Delaney, I will let you take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Abeta. So I will humbly try to fill, uh, Mr. Lovato's shoes here. Um, just a couple of quick slides with some new information. The first one, um, and I think maybe this is why Mr. Lovato is not here. So he doesn't have to share this bad news. He did warn us last month that we would expect some drops in attendance. Um, and you'll see in my next presentation, um, why this is. So, uh, Omicron hit our students pretty hard and it hit our staff pretty hard late December, first couple of weeks in January. Um, so you can definitely some, see some dips in attendance. Um, and it correlates with the absences and the cases that we dealt with. We did have far more cases at the high school level than at any other area. And, um, that, as you can see, uh, goes right along with the attendance. We're seeing up until grade eight, you're seeing, uh, percentages in the eighties, right around eighty-five across the board. And then once you hit the high school, they start to dip under, under eighty. Um, so we're hoping to bounce back. The cases have been dropping, um, and it has been quieting down, um, fingers crossed. But that's where we are with attendance. Um, and then I'm going to scroll down to this slide, which is the mobility slide.
Can I just ask a question before we move on to the next one? Since we're already at the attendance. I'm just curious, is there a way of calculating like a COVID adjusted rate, right? Because we know that a lot of these folks who are missing school, it's because of COVID, right? So we don't necessarily want to, like, I guess, how are we doing with the folks who are able to, to come, uh, because they're, they're healthy?
Yeah, so the answer to your first question is yes. And Terry Young, actually, I worked with her to build a system to do that. Um, so when we have a, a COVID, it's tricky because we can't share, uh, I, personal identifiable health information through our system. So we have a code, um, that basically says this absence is related to COVID. Um, but we haven't used that to pull out. So it's a clever idea, um, Roberto. Because we, we haven't actually used that to pull out the COVID-related absences to see what the attendance rate is. Aside of that, but I think that would be an easy thing to do. I just, I can't answer it right now.
Yeah, no, that's great. And, you know, because as we're looking for, you know, ninety-five percent rate, we're clearly not going to be hitting that because people are absent, but they're absent for a good reason, right? So I, I would love to, you know, just make sure that we, you know, if we have, if we have some wins there, uh, in that we are able to, to. To have the folks who are able to be in school, attending school, then, um, you know. Would be.
Yeah. A- a- and, and it's a tricky year because, you know, when there's a borderline case where often, you know, kids and staff would. You know, if it's sort of a borderline case of the sniffles, we would want people to, you know, sort of plow through and, and, and work through it. But we are advising people not to do that now. Um, so if, if students are sick, we don't want them to come to school. Um, so it is a tricky year to look at attendance as a, as a measure, but we are tracking it. Um, thank you. Thank you. That's a great idea. Um, and as far as the, uh, mobility, we do continue to see our enrollment ticking up. Um, overall, we had sixty-seven students transfer in, forty-one students transfer out. Um, uh, at the elementary level, it, that, the biggest difference exists where we had twice as many coming in as out. Um, and also at the high school, we had twenty-six in and eleven out. Um, and so that pretty much concludes the updated, um, indicators of success. Everything else, there's nothing new to add based on the measures.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. And so if you want to go right into your next report and explain about more about, you can go into the attendance rates too. On this, uh, on our COVID testing update.
Absolutely. So, um, this is some good news, um, as well as some, um, positive effective changes. So, um, we're going to talk about three things here. One, I'm going to provide an overview on Desi's new testing options. Um, and they're, uh, drastically different, but there are some, still some similarities as to what we've been doing. Um, I'll give you a little heads up on where we are with current participation and a little bit on how people can continue to opt in. Um, and then I'll provide an update on COVID case numbers where we stand as of today. And then we'll have an opportunity for any questions and answers. Um, so we have some new options around testing in our school. So first off, the things that we're going to continue with, um, we've been having a system for symptomatic testing. Meaning if someone comes on campus, begins to exhibit symptoms, as long as they have consented into this program. They can, uh, take a rapid test at the health office and, you know, that would say, you know, if it comes up positive, obviously the. Uh, adult or student would need to go home. Um, and if it's negative, they can remain in school. Uh, we're also continuing with our pooled testing, uh, program, also requiring a, a, a digital consent. So, you know, we're, we're not stopping that. And that's the program where people can submit a sample. We get a PCR test weekly for anyone who's interested. Um, what's new is we are now beginning weekly at-home rapid testing. Um, for anyone who opts in. Now, this is different than providing digital consent because you're taking the test kit home and doing it at home. Um, it's free of charge to any student or staff member that opts in. It's essentially, um. No strings attached. So all you have to do is say, you know, here's, um, here's my, my name, my child's name. Yes, I would like my child to, um, participate in the at-home testing. And then what happens is they will get take-home tests sent home with them, um, throughout the length of the program. Which will last through April vacation at least, and Desi may continue that beyond that date. So they are providing weekly, um, tests. So basically you'll get a box which has two tests. You know, you'll use one each week, uh, prior to returning to school after a weekend. Um, what we're discontinuing as a result of this, um, and I think for those of you that remember last time, we, I talked a little bit about. Um, the efficacy of contact tracing, um, and it, it really had become an ineffective practice. And I have that little image down at the bottom and those are, um, the, the phrase that I've heard in terms of contact tracing is contact tracing during Omicron. Is like chasing a bullet train with the bicycle. It just doesn't work. You can't keep up with it. And it ends up, you know, taking away the efforts, um, to be more effective with dealing with symptomatic cases. Which is what we really need to be doing. Um, and so what will, what we're doing as a result of this at-home rapid testing program. Is we will be discontinuing individualized contact tracing. Which means if we have a positive student in school, that student will go home. But we will not be contact tracing and identifying close contacts. Um, and some of the reasoning for that, most close contacts, we spend all this time identifying who they are. You might have fifteen or sixteen close contacts. The majority of them, after we've looked up their vaccination status, made a bunch of phone calls. We find out most of them are exempt anyway. Um, and then the ones that aren't, um, they can opt into a test and stay program. But ninety-eight percent of those people end up being negative anyway. So we're spending hours and hours and hours, um, with fruitless efforts. Um, so the other idea is the likelihood, um, of contact off of campus is just as likely as on campus. Actually more likely. So just because you are, um, identified as, um, a close contact, doesn't mean that you didn't get it somewhere else as well. Um, and so as a result of that, if we're, uh, discontinuing individualized contact tracing. Um, that's where we're primarily getting our test and state people. So we won't have any test and state people. So the test and state program would be discontinued as well. Um, so we are pretty excited about this because essentially every one of our staff and students have the ability to get free. Weekly, uh, rapid take-home tests. And we know those have been very difficult to find. And they're also not, not very inexpensive. You know, they can be twenty-five dollars a kit in most stores. And we're able to provide those to every single student who opts in. Um, so with that, the participation, um, as of probably yesterday morning. We had eight hundred thirty-six of our staff members have opted in. There was a Google form that went out to all of our staff and all of our families. So we have about seventy-five percent opt-in. Um, our students are lagging a little bit behind that rate right now. We had, um, sixteen hundred students have opted in thus far, um, which were only around twenty-six percent. Um, but our, our principals and our, our health department are working really hard to push this. Um, this is the first week students will be receiving tests actually tomorrow before they go home. Um, so we're all equipped to get those out. Um, a little one, one pager will go home with instructions, QR codes. On, on how to do those, how to do the actual tests. And for those that aren't receiving kits, they'll be receiving, um, a hard copy. Of the form that they can fill out for those that, um, aren't comfortable doing it digitally. Um, I do want to pause and thank, uh, Michael Sullivan for all of his work with the communication. We have communicated through so many modalities, um, to try to reach as many people as we can. Um, the opt-in form is really simple. The links are here in front of you. Um, and for anyone listening at home who wants to opt in, give your school a call and say, hey, I want to opt in. Um, and we can send a hard copy with a QR code and a hard copy of the form. So you can fill it out with a pencil and paper. You can fill it out with your phone, um, however, however it's easier for you, but just give your school a call and they will, um. Make sure you get opted in. And all they really need is your name, the school you attend, the grade level. Um, and you basically just click yes to agree to use the test each week and report your positive case to the school. So with that, that's pretty much what the program is. I'm sure people will have some questions. Um, at this point, I'll shift and just, um, talk a little bit about where we are with the cases. So these are our, our student cases. Um, and if you remember from last month. We were, if you can see my cursor, we were right around here. And we were hoping that that spike was symmetrical. Um, and we're finding that it is, and you're, you're seeing the drop in the last two weeks, um, which is really good. Um, and you will also see a similar pattern with our staff. Um, the staff has had a more drastic jump. Staff is, has always been a little bit ahead of the trend with the students for some reason. Um, and I don't know why, but, um, the staff has dropped faster than the students. So that leads me to believe that we're going to see further drops with students moving forward. Um, so with that, I'll open it up if anyone has any questions or comments.
Everybody in the committee have any questions, comments?
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
I just wanted to say that with the clinic that the school had, it went amazing. And I saw a lot of students participating, including me. And I had a lot of students, because you know, I'm always at the main office. Um, I have heard from some of them, when is it going to happen again? So I don't know if there was, um, another clinic going to happen again in schools and stuff like that. Because I know there's some students that missed it or weren't really informed about it and because it was too quick and stuff like that. So I just wanted to, um, ask if there is a planning on future, uh, clinics at the schools.
Thank you, Cece. And I, I really appreciate that feedback. I was, um, you know, at that clinic that day. And I was so elated and I was with, uh, Michael Sullivan as well. He can vouch for me here. The kids were so grateful and so polite and, um, and just in such good spirits. I was just so impressed with that. And, um, it, you know, I walked out of there and Dr. Abeta can tell you, I, I went right back to City Hall and I said, we have to do this again. Um, it, you know, we've run a, we've run a number of them now, um, but I think it's, it's starting to, um, it's starting to take hold. We do have really high vaccination rates at the high school, really proud of our kids. Um, but the ones who haven't, I, I would say, I think we did eighty kids that day and about half of them were first timers. Which means they weren't there for a booster. They were there to get their first, very first vaccine. Um, so to answer your question, absolutely, um, it'll probably be happening around mid-March. Because we have February break coming up very quickly. And then when we come back, it's already going to be March. Um, I think we have two weeks left before break. So, uh, we are planning on arranging some, um, in March. And what's up in the air? See, and maybe I can get your feedback here. It was a challenge to do it during the school day, but I know that made it easier for some kids. But it does take kids away from learning. So I'm curious what your, um, take is on whether it makes more sense to have it during school or maybe after school.
Um, well, for me, it was really good to do it during school just because, uh, you know, I was able to go right away and everything. And I saw both of you there. I was really scared if you saw me. I was really scared of getting back to me and stuff like that. Because it just, I fear needles and stuff like that. But I feel like it really depends. But I think it will be harder for students to go after school just because some of them work right after school. Or they have, you know, responsibilities or siblings or, you know, things they need to do. So I would, I think it would be good to have it during school. And just in case, have an option for students that are able to go after school as well.
Thank you. And this is why, this is why we have you here. Um, I really appreciate that. So that is great feedback and we'll take that into account.
And Cece, another thing is we'll be doing another clinic at the elementary as well, so.
I just wanted to quickly just say, you know, I, it's not been easy to have to change from one method to another, to another, to another. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I know that it's been a lot more than you probably ever expected to do. When you signed up to become an administrator or a teacher. Um, so I, I just, you know, it, it, this pandemic has asked so much of all of us. And, um, you know, like, I, I, I hope when you return to medical school, um, you have a fantastic time there. Um, yeah, no, I, I just, it's, this is, has been a lot for everybody and, and, um, you know, I, I really appreciate the work you've been doing.
Appreciate that, Roberto. And it's, it's really been a team effort. Um, I do, I do try to be positive about things. And one thing I know is that. Um, I do, I do try to be positive about things and one thing I know is that. Um, we've learned a lot from this and it's not just about the medical stuff. It's really around um what happens when we all pull together. And and work together as a team and get through really hard times. And I think like, you know, I hope we're on the tail end of all of this, right? And and as a result, we know that after this, I'm sure we can get through anything that comes at us.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Um, we do have a wonderful team and um can't think of a better team to go through all of this with. And um, just a really strong team, so we're um, we take it as it comes and we're like, we'll just get through this. And that's what uh Mr. Delaney and his team have done and this entire cabinet. So I'm just, I'm fortunate to work with the people that I work with. Um, the next is our student representative update and I know Cece and Valerie are here. And they have a lot to say and they have been preparing for today. So I'll turn it over to Cece.
Hi, it's me again. Um, so um, we have, um, I don't know if you remember, but last meeting. We shared about something that we did um over the last month. In order to get some students feedback and like I said, that we will always try to find different ways to get students feedback. So this was our first um try, you know, on getting students feedback and everything. And it went really well. I'm gonna be uh, I'm gonna be like really happy to share this. Because even though it was our first time doing this and we didn't know if it was gonna work out well or not. It did work and we had a hundred and ninety-two students fill out our group form. And I was really happy to see that the um freshmen and sophomores were the ones that had a higher. Um, responses and that, that's what I was expecting because I feel like. I really care about what um nine graders and ten graders have to say just because they're the newer, you know. People coming to the high school because, you know, uh sophomores were caught the freshman year because online learning and stuff like that. So I take sophomores and uh freshmen as both freshmen just because, you know, it's their first year in the high school and everything like that. Um, so one of the questions we uh asked was what's working well in your classroom, clubs? On everything and the uh, the top ideas that we got from students was that the classroom environment was really great. And they felt like really comfortable and they just felt like they loved the creations and stuff like that. So it was really positive, most of the information we got. And including Bridge Academy students, we're also participating in this, which makes me really happy to see all the feedback in Spanish and everything I got. Because that's why we were trying to do, to include, you know, all those students that, you know, feel so separated from everyone else. And something that I really liked was to see that we had relationship with teachers. And students are, were able to actually make a real, like, have a relationship with the teacher in order to see, you know. In order to feel better and I heard that a lot of teachers are trying to. Get out of the teacher role in order to understand students as nor, like as people, you know. They were just being vulnerable with them and they were just being really open about knowing about students. Instead of, you know, going, being really strict and close-minded, they are having really open-minded towards students. And that's something that is really uh making me really happy to know that. A lot of uh teachers are actually doing this and including my teachers are doing this as well. So I'm really happy with that. And I am really happy to say just because I'm a former ESL student. Um, I'm happy to know that I got a lot of feedback from students that are learning English. That they said that they are having really comfortable about learning English in the school. And they were actually learning English and everything like that and, you know, their teachers. Bridge Academy teachers are actually doing anything they can to help them. So that really made my heart really happy because like I said, I'm a former ESL student. So I know the struggle that is to come to a new country with new people, with a new language and with a thousand of different things. And the second question we asked was uh, what has your school or classroom done to make you feel successful? And a lot of them were saying that fair grading was one of the biggest one we had. Um, there is no doubt that the transition uh from remote to in-person hasn't been really difficult for some students. Therefore, like teachers have been very understandable about making students feel supportive, you know, giving them. Time to turn in assignments and everything just because, you know, um, like one of the teachers was saying that came in here. Um, Ms. Basila, there is a lot of students that, you know, miss school because of their personal experiences and personal lives. And I feel like teachers are have been really understandable about that. And they said that um they are really happy with the variety of resources that Chelsea High School has. You know, like college help, um, learning English help and other resources. So I'm really glad to see that this year um Chelsea High School had, kids, students are having really supportive. Uh, being, uh, have been supported all the way. And we heard that a lot of teachers or students are being, like students are really happy that they have got verbal support. As in, you know, words of encouragement, acknowledgement, appreciation from staff within the school. And it makes me really happy because I know Mr. Lovato has been working on acknowledging all the student. And now we have students over the week, as staff over the week. And I was really happy to see all of that because this makes students feel really motivated on keeping uh, on keep going to school. And, you know, actually doing their best. And um, sorry, I'm talking too much, but I feel like this was really important. And um, the third question, and then Valerie will go on from that. I uh was, we asked, do you feel like your relationship with the teachers are benefiting your success? Because I feel like relationships are really important towards students being successful. Because if you don't feel comfortable with a teacher or you don't have that connection. Students are not gonna be motivated to go to class or really not interested on learning anything. And we had a lot of good, good feedback, like I said. And it says that a bunch of them said teachers take the time to build relationships. And we had something that um, it was really, really important for us. That was culture cur, like creates safe and comfortable learning environment. That a lot of teachers have been really understandable about all their students' backgrounds, cultures and, you know, uh, life experiences. And these relationships are critical as students are able to see their teachers, not only as an authority figure. But as a human who respects them back, our teachers are special as they don't have used their authority. When authority is used to help students rather than using it because of the power is there. And it is easy, it is easy to build this strong relationship. We are really thankful for all the um work that has been done in order to make students feel. Comfortable around the school because I know that's been a really hard time with everything that's going on. So that's all I have and I will uh leave the rest for Valerie.
Hello, my name is Valerie Cretin. I am a senior. I'm really happy that we were able to do this um survey for the students. Cause we were able to get responses from so many different students, which is what we need to present to you all. Um, so a question that we asked just for the athletes was, do you think the school provides you with adequate sport facilities slash equipments? Many athletes spoke about wanting better equipment and uniforms. One student said, when we go to other schools, there's a major difference between their weight room and ours. A track member said, we don't always have spikes, warm-ups, et cetera. Another point that was brought up by the athletes was, there's an unfairness between the different sports. Um, for example, some believe that there are more, there should be more attention slash funding to the track and baseball teams. Um, as most, as most of the attention is on the football team. In other words, make sure that the budget goes towards all teams equally, not one over the other. The student shared that as a member of the girls' ba- basketball team, they feel as if the boy sports have more of an advantage. Of getting new equipment while the girls are only given old equipment. Um, next question was, what do, what would you like to see improved at your school? Um, we had three main points for this one, the first one being crowded hallway situation. During class change, there are a few hotspots where the hallways are very crowded. This is a concern since COVID nineteen has been spreading like crazy. The next point is more staff, specifically counselors, so scheduling meetings isn't as difficult. The third point is the bathroom situation. Although the bathrooms are open after being closed to the students. Um, beginning to misuse it, students are still seeing large groups of people in the restrooms, which is a little bit uncomfortable. Um, so the last question we asked was, are there any additional concerns? And the main ideas around those were the E policy and the late policy. Many students spoke about how they did not agree with it and they wanted modifications. Another point was mental health and then the last point was slurs used by some students. Um, some students are not considering the backgrounds of the words they're using or they're not considering um the people around them who it may be negatively affecting. With that, I wanted to end with this response from one student where they said, thanks for making this survey. Hopefully some changes happen that can improve this school and its students. Thank you.
And before we go on, I just wanted to acknowledge that I know um Dr. Jennings uh team. And I read, everyone is really working towards um fixing a lot of this already. Because we had shared information with them already because, you know, they're always at the school. So we are really glad to see that all of, and the students are really glad to see that a lot of changes are happening already. I know Mr. Lovato and Dr. Jennings came to our last meeting to talk a little bit more about what was gonna happen in the future. And what is going on in order to fix all those things. And we really are um really happy to see that we shared this with them and changes are already happening. And I know that Mr. Lovato already spoke on the crowded situation and how they're trying to fix that. So I'm really happy to say that there is, the the work that has been done in the last months. Because it hasn't been in the whole year. It started like some, about correct, um, two months ago or three months ago. We have seen big changes and we are really glad and really thankful this is happening. Not just because we're seniors, but I'm really glad this is going to help the future generations that are gonna come to Chelsea Public Schools. I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
I just wanna commend both you and Valerie on the amazing work you're doing and reporting to us, right? Because the cabinet team could come and report to us of the work that's going on. But what is most meaningful is hearing it from the students. Because if we're hearing it from you guys, then we know it's happening. And Cecilia, I love your energy and that you're loving everything they're doing at the high school. Those are great signs. And I hope your energy is contagious to the other students and everybody feels the same way. Um, because that's how the change will be and thank you for letting us know that. At such a short time period, they are changing. Um, and listening to the student voice, um, you know, it's a process. It takes time. But I'm glad that it's already going um in the right direction. So thank you very much for your report. Those are the best ones. The highlight of the meeting is listening to you guys, you're senior. If you're eighteen, you're staying in Chelsea, what district? You need to run the school committee and keep everybody on their toes. Um, any other comments from our, any other school committee members before we move along? Okay, well, thank you. Dr. Beta, are you done with your part or we still have more?
Still have just a couple more reports and then I'll be done. Um. Okay. I'm going to scoot on over to. Okay, this is our personnel report. So you can see here with our personnel report from January, all of our new hires. Again, we've hired seventy percent Caucasian, fifteen percent Hispanic, fifteen percent um black. And then our resignations we've had, um, and retirements, we've had three, so not very many. And then uh one promotion transfer. And then as far as in uh enrollment, as you heard from Mr. Delaney earlier. We're holding pretty steady at six thousand one hundred fifty-seven students, which is pretty steady. Um, so I would like to commend the, these two reports to the record.
Thank you, Dr. Beta. Um, moving along, do we have a motion to accept the committee reports?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oregan. Okay, we're gonna move along. There's no unfinished business. I mean, you could pull it up on the screen, but I'm trying to also see it on my end closer. No, keep yours up. I'm gonna be referencing both, you know, I need glasses now. This is what happens. Um, huh, after doing remote work. Okay, so we're gonna move on to a new business. Consideration in action to accept a hundred and four million six hundred, a hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. For FY twenty-two from the Department of Elementary and Education, Secondary Education. For the American Rescue Plan Homeless Children and Youth Two Grant. This grant is intended to ensure that students who are homeless enroll in and attend school. And have racially equitable and culturally responsive opportunities to succeed. The funds will be used for backpacks filled with school supplies and hygiene supplies. School uniforms, debit cards for families to provide needed items for students. And short-term mental health services for students in need of additional support. So under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides. For the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration in action to accept a hundred and four um, thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for FY twenty-two. From the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the American Rescue Plan Homeless Children and Youth Two Grant. Ms. Alfarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Vales?
Yes.
It's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three F's and motion passes. Consideration in action to accept one hundred thousand from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. For the Supporting Student Social Emotional Learning, Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness. Through multi-tiered systems of support, SCL and Mental Health Grant. This grant is intended to adapt, expand, or strengthen systems that respond to the social, emotional, and behavioral health needs of students and families. The funds will be used for mental health services, students and families, including group counseling related to grief, loss. Trauma, anxiety, and depression. It will also support staff professional development, software for case management, and other expenses in support of the program. Under Mass Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides acceptance of grants. For educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration in action to accept a hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Edu- of Elementary and Secondary Education. For the Supporting Student Social Emotional Learning, Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness through multi-tiered systems of support. SCL and Mental Health Grant. Ms. Alfarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Vales?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three F's and motion passes. Consideration in action to accept three hundred thousand from the Nellie May Foundation Education Foundation. Subgrant, via subgrant from La Colaborativa for the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. For school year twenty-one, twenty-two. La Colaborativa will serve as the project manager and fiscal sponsor for a multi-year grant awarded by the Nellie May Education Foundation. The funds will be divided evenly between La Colaborativa and CPS and will be paid over three years extending to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. La Colaborativa will offer wraparound supports and community touchpoints for high school students participating in the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy. CVLA will use the funds to create family outreach and administrative position, stipends for education specialists. After-school programs and curriculum work. The funds will be, will also be used for professional development, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action.
Before we do the roll call.
And Mr. Jimenez?
Yeah, I just wanted, just wanted to ask, so it's a, it's a subgrant from La Colaborativa, does that mean that La Colaborativa was the one that proposed the grant and then wrote the grant and then or how, how can you just explain that? I, I think it's the first time that we've done a subgrant since I've been here. I just wanna make sure that I understand it.
Sure. So the La Colaborativa and Chelsea Public Schools, we came together and there was this grant opportunity from the Nellie May Foundation. And so we partnered together, uh worked on the grant, applied for the grant together. So when Nellie May funded the grant, one of us had to be the receiver of the funds. And so La Colaborativa is gonna be the receiver of the funds and then they'll, they'll um, the funds will go through them to us. But we, we worked and we worked together on the grant, the initial grant, and submitted it together as a partnership.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call?
Roll call. Consideration and action to accept three hundred thousand dollars from the Nellie May Education Foundation via subgrant from La Colaborativa for the Chelsea Virtual Learning Academy for S school year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's four in the affirmative and three absent.
Four in the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept two private grants for school year twenty-one, twenty-two inclu- including twenty-five thousand from the Boston Foundation for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy and fifteen thousand from the Anna B. Stern's Charitable Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program. Funds from the Boston Foundation will be used to support the Work to Credit Program that Chelsea Opportunity Academy is developing. And funds from the Anna B. Stern's Charitable Foundation will be used by the Intergenerational Literacy Program for stipend student assistance, supplies, and other expenses in support of the program. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, please.
Consideration and action to accept two private grants for school year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two including twenty-five thousand from the Boston Foundation for the Chelsea Opportunity Academy and fifteen thousand for the Anna B. Stern's Charitable Foundation for the Intergenerational Literacy Program. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. uh, Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept a gift of up to three hundred and fifty gift certificates to Target stores at twenty-five dollar per gift certificate for a total value of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty donated by the Wellington Management Foundation and Empower Schools to be distributed to students attending upcoming Acceleration Academy academies who have perfect attendance. The Wellington Management Foundation has graciously gifted funds to celebrate student achievement as part of the upcoming Acceleration Academies. These funds have been provided to Empower Schools, which will be purchasing Target gift cards for twenty-five dollars that Chelsea Public Schools can award to students with perfect attendance. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven A provides the acceptance of gifts for educational purposes only with the approval of the school committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of up to three hundred and fifty gift certificates to Target stores at twenty-five dollars per gift certificate for a total of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars donated by the Wellington Management Foundation and Empower Schools to be distributed to students attending upcoming Acceleration Academies who have perfect attendance. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept a gift of yes, EL STEM-based curriculum and profession, professional development from Dr. Christine M. Cunningham in the College of Education at Pennsylvania State University with an estimated value of one thousand two hundred. The Dr. Cunningham and the ES team from Penn State have graciously donated after-school EL STEM-based curriculum for the district's new EL after-school program. In addition to the professional development at an estimated value of one thousand two hundred. This curriculum will be a key component of a new after-school activities being offered to students in grades one through four. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Thirty-Seven A provides the acceptance of any gifts for educational purposes only with the approval of the school committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of yes, EL STEM-based curriculum and professional development from Dr. Christine M. Cunningham and the College of Education at Pennsylvania State University with an estimated value of uh one thousand two hundred dollars. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept uh one hundred and fifty-five thousand for FY twenty-two from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Acceleration Academies pro- grant. DSE has recently issued a grant award to fund staff at the Acceleration Academies for this year in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Funds will be used to pay teacher stipends and purchase instructional supplies in support of the program. Acceleration Academies will take place this year during the February and April school vacation weeks. And it will be held in person at Chelsea High School and at the Clark Ave Middle School and the Williams Middle School Conference. And the Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, provides acceptance of grants for educational purposes only when approved by the school committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a hundred and fifty-five um thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Acceleration Academies Grant. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to accept a gift of eleven thousand surgical masks and four thousand K and ninety-five masks with an estimated value of thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars donated by anonymous to be distributed to staff and students. An anonymous donor has generously given CPS eleven thousand surgical masks and four thousand K and ninety-five masks with an estimated value of thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. These many masks will be great benefit for the district and will be distributed to the staff and students. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of eleven thousand surgical masks and four thousand K and ninety-five masks with an estimated value of thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy donated by anonymous to be distributed to staff and students. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two for specified hourly positions to comply with the City of Chelsea's living wage ordinance. Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly positions and salary positions. In January, the City of Chelsea has amended its living wage from fourteen eighty-five to fifteen eighty-six. An unusually large one-year increase that was not anticipated when the district amended hourly rate in June twenty-twenty-one. The district is proposing to increase the hourly rates for several positions in response to this change. In addition, this action will increase the upper end of the pay for the translator interpreter position in the hopes to attract more candidates. Roll call?
Consideration and action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two for specified hourly positions to comply with the City of Chelsea's living wage ordinance. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's four in the affirmative and three absent.
On the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. Consideration and action to approve a homeschooling petition for Chelsea family. The curriculum and instruction subcommittee has reviewed the proposals and has determined that the petition has met the requirements of the Chelsea Public Schools homeschooling policy. All homeschooling petitions must be approved by the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to approve a homeschooling petition for a Chelsea family. Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's four in the affirmative and three absent.
Four in the affirmative, three absent, motion passes. We don't have any other communications. Any comments? That any other school committee members would like to say? Dr. Beta, and would you like to announce tomorrow's?
I, I would love to announce that we are not having school tomorrow due to the um implement weather. So just to be safe and make sure everyone is safe, our staff and our students, um, we have closed schools for tomorrow.
Any other last comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Oh, uh.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, one second, we're having a
Uh, Monday, we have the meeting with the
A joint meeting at City Hall at six thirty. Veronica?
So we have a special vote at six thirty for our team and then the joint meeting at seven following it.
Okay. Thank you, Veronica. Um, Ms. Alfaro made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
No objection, meeting adjourned, everybody stay safe and warm. Enjoy the rest of the week. Bye.